I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, May third, two thousand and twenty-three. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Clayton Paul from the Hope Church here in Kingsburg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Yeah, God, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to pray. God, thank you for this opportunity to gather here as so many people work for the, God, for the thriving of this city and for this community. God, I pray for this meeting. God, I pray that you would give all of these city council members and other city leaders wisdom and discernment, grace and patience as they work together. God, lead this time. Let it be just a blessing. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clayton. First on the agenda, I'd like to call this meeting to order tonight. First on our agenda, we have, Abby, could you please take roll call?
Present.
Here. Next, we'd like to approve the agenda. Items by the council to approve the agenda or make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a presentation. Tonight, we have one. Spring two thousand and twenty-three organizational improvement award to Jeff Lloyd. Jeff, would you please come up? I'll hear something I'd like to read about you, Jeff. On behalf of the council, I would like to offer congratulations on your nomination and award for the organizational improvement award with the city of Kingsburg. Kingsburg is a wonderful community that is maintained through the hard work of our citizens, volunteers, and employees. We sincerely thank you for your hard work you have given in keeping our community a safe place to live, work, and play. Having dedicated individuals such as yourself gives Kingsburg an individual asset, especially when it involves interacting with the public, improving your department, and being a representative of the fire department and our organization. You were nominated and selected by your peers for your professionalism and dedication to the department and the city. One example given in your nomination was your efforts in furthering the fire department's wellness and fitness programs through program planning, budgeting, and furthering your education. Your role as an engineer, paramedic, and wellness fitness program director is vital in keeping Kingsburg well-maintained, and your positive attitude and efforts are a great benefit to Kingsburg. Thank you and congratulations, Jeff. Chief, would you like to come up and say something, Chief? Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Appreciate that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yes, I would like to say something on behalf of Jeff. He has been a motivated person since day one of me arriving there. I think his dedication to his fellow members has really shown through this process of him, before he was chosen to be, and really why he was chosen to be one of the directors for this health and wellness program. As you saw, last year, we came to council, wanted to earmark some monies that were part of our ambulance funding, the night call monies. Those monies went into a pot of money that we needed to be able to do health and wellness screening. This allowed us to then build a program that Jeff now manages overseas and coordinates. He's gone about finding new fitness equipment for us in general to make sure we're, we have state-of-the-art gear to train with, and also to do functional firefighter fitness, not something where we look like we're a bunch of meatheads, you know, pumping iron and we're gonna go break stuff, although that can be good at some times. There's really a lot more functional firefighter fitness, and that's really what Jeff has taken upon himself to do. He's also been pursuing his bachelor's degree, and as part of that bachelor's degree, took it upon himself to do specific projects that helped deepen his understanding of firefighter functional fitness. Therefore, this is why he was nominated by his peers for this specifically. So I wanted to mention some additional things, maybe some backstories as to why Jeff stood out from all the other people that could have gotten an organizational improvement award. These specific things, although they don't apply to every single member of the city, helps us decrease that firefighter cancer-causing pieces and also increase firefighter health and fitness, so we don't have those long-term workman's compensation claims. So overall, it affects us in a very positive, positive manner. So I would like to officially give him one of our awards internally from the fire department and recognize him for this organizational improvement award tonight. Thank you very much.
Jeff, we have something from the city also for you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have public comment. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anybody that would like to speak tonight on public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Next, we have consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital reading ordinances by titles, only an adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have five point one through five point five. Do we have any council members that would like to pull any consent calendar items? No? Anybody from the public that would like to pull a consent calendar item? None? Okay. Nobody? Can I get a motion, please, to approve consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay. Motion carries. Move on, move on. Regular calendar. Tonight, we have, start out with six point one, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four draft capital improvement plan for our streets, FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four streets update. Staff report by city manager Alex Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item this evening continues our development of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four annual budget and specifically focuses on our capital improvement plan, our draft capital improvement plan, as well as our street projects. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, staff has identified fifty-one projects totaling approximately six point six million from various funding sources. For comparative purposes in fiscal year twenty-three, a total of fifty-nine projects totaling nine point one million dollars were approved. Staff is bringing this item to council for discussion and input, but please note, it's very likely that this list will be modified as we continue to work through internal budget meetings. We are presenting this draft information in order to consider public and council input as we continue to finalize budget figures. The final CIP will be considered as part of the budget adoption by council in June. As part of the CIP discussion, we'll also be reviewing the proposed street improvement plan for the upcoming year. The city maintains a pavement management system which identifies the condition of city streets and provides us as a guide for annual maintenance activities. Utilizing the management system, staff has identified several streets for inclusion as maintenance projects for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. As you can see there, we include what's called a pavement condition index, which comes out of that evaluation. That evaluation is done by a third party to rate the streets, and they're rated from zero to a hundred, with a hundred being the best and zero being the worst. Before I jump into next year's items, I just wanted to quickly go over the street projects that are currently out to bid and will be still completed this summer. Those include Twenty-second Avenue from Sierra to Orange Street, which ties into the Summerlin subdivision, Madsen Avenue Phase Two, which is from Stroud Avenue to Cam, Tenth Avenue from Stroud to Cam Avenue, and then a couple of sections of Eighteenth Avenue or Mendocino, Avenue three ninety-six to Earl Street, and then southbound Cam from southbound Eighteenth from Cam to the city limits to the north will be done in conjunction with the new housing developments. And we're just waiting for PG&E to remove their poles on the east side of the street so that that paving will continue in those locations. We've included a street map of work that's been done from two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and twenty-three, so you can see the work that's been done over the last decade. And that map includes work that is planned for this coming summer. For two thousand and twenty-four, we have the following proposed projects: Fifteenth, Sixteenth, and Seventeenth Avenue from Stroud to the north, tying into the new Lennar Track, Riverside Avenue, which is a small portion from Twenty-first to Twenty-second Avenue, which is in conjunction with that Twenty-second Avenue project I mentioned earlier, Mariposa Street from Sixth Avenue to Tenth Avenue is a reconstruction that's over by Roosevelt School. That's proposed to use SB one funds, which are specific voter-approved dollars that we receive, and then Draper Street from California Street to Sierra Street, which includes a Cape Seal. All the projects above will utilize local funding from transportation allocations, including local transportation funding, Article eight, gas tax, Measure C, and the previously mentioned SB one funds. We are proposing a portion, I mentioned the Draper Street project because it combines funding with the transportation-oriented development grant that we received through the Fresno Council of Governments. This allows us to take advantage of grant funding to minimize our local cost, upgrade Draper Street, which is obviously one of our most visible and highly trafficked streets, which is also slated to get designated bike lanes as part of that project. The Cape Seal process is the same one that was used on Marion Street a few years ago. When we evaluate street projects, it's a little bit of a formula and also, I guess, a little bit of art as well. So obviously, we look at the condition of the streets, but we also look at those roads that are most frequently traveled. So, you know, for example, Eighteenth Avenue, you know, gets done far more than maybe some smaller neighborhood streets, just, you know, based upon the vehicular traffic, you know, the type of traffic that occurs there. So, and then also, we take into consideration those requests that we get from the public. So, you know, based upon complaints or just regular condition that we get there. So all of those things are taken into consideration and then are obviously prioritized based upon the budget that we have for each year. Just looking very quickly at some of the capital projects that we have scheduled for the next fiscal year, I'll just go through them briefly, but certainly happy to touch on them afterwards if there are specific questions. We are planning to complete the strategic planning update, our five-year update organization-wide. This is a carryover from the current year, just based upon the timing of when that work will be completed. While they're not necessarily capital projects, I do usually include funding for the incentive programs that the council hasn't approved previously. So we have funding for our facade alley programs, our forgivable loan program, our upper-floor loan program. In the coming year, we do have a couple of planning items that need to be completed. So we are working through our general plan update, last completed in nineteen ninety-three. We're also required by the state now to do a NEXUS study update for our impact fees every eight years. The last one for us was completed in two thousand and sixteen, so we are due for that as well. There are a handful of sidewalk projects that are slated for construction in the next year, Twelfth Avenue from Stroud to Aslan, as well as our Eighteenth Avenue project, which is from Tulare up to Clepper. Those are federally funded projects. We have a small portion of a match, a little over eleven percent. There are, as there are each year, investments in both fire and police, from engines to facility upgrades, and those come from both general fund and the fire enterprise fund, as well as Measure E. And then we do have some water enterprise projects planned as well, the replacement of some two- and four-inch lines, which are small, some of our smaller mains, which will improve fire flows in the community, along with some hydrant replacements that have been identified, both by our fire department in conjunction with our water department. And we also have some software update for our water billing, as well as updating flow meters at five of the seven city-owned wells. So that concludes my report for this evening. Again, this is an informational item. Certainly happy to hear input from the council and from the public, and then there are department heads in attendance this evening that can more specifically speak to individual projects as well if there are questions.
Questions from council?
I have a question on the roads that you first talked about. The reconstructing, when we're reconstructing the roads, are we going to be using that to, the pavement that's removed, will those be used in alleys, to address the alleys in town?
We have done that in the past. We haven't had that particular discussion this year, but that's certainly something if we have some of that reclaimed material that we can look at some of the alleys and put down in those locations. But good thought.
I know there's a homeowner by Lincoln School that would be really happy with that.
Yes. I think he's actually, I think that area has gotten it previously, but maybe it's due again, so.
Any other questions from council? Public? Does public have any questions on this agenda item? No? Okay, this is information only, correct, Alex?
Of course, if there are items that come up afterwards, both from the public and from council, please reach out to staff and let us know. And I did fail to mention, there is a status report just from the fiscal year twenty-three capital projects that is included in your packet as well. So happy to answer any questions on that if there are as well. Otherwise, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Six point two. Traffic policy, speed humps and stop signs. Staff report prepared by city engineer Dave Peters. Presentation by city engineer Dave Peters.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. From time to time, the city receives citizen requests for the installation of speed bumps and/or stop signs on various city streets or intersections. Those requests are initially reviewed by the city's traffic safety committee, and in order to standardize the process for processing these requests, staff's put together some formal policies for evaluation of these requests. So I'll just go through, I'll go through the individual policies. If you have any questions as I go through, you know, feel free to stop me. In terms of speed humps, initially, a request, and this is the policy that's in your packet, initially, a request would be made by a citizen or group, and it would be submitted to the traffic safety committee for screening. Initially, the request would be, there would be initial screening by the traffic safety committee, and there's, in the policy, it lists, you know, several criteria that would kind of almost immediately disqualify a road from consideration. Like, for instance, if it's a private road, wouldn't be eligible. It needs to be a local street, so residential street, so we're not putting speed bumps on Golden State or, you know, Simpson Street. Street has to be greater than a thousand feet, has to be less than forty feet wide. So that's all criteria that would kind of push us in a direction of having a successful speed bump installation. Also note that there's a list of reasons in the policy why you wouldn't install speed bumps. So even if you think it might help with speeding, on page two of the policy, you know, it lists several things that, several issues that the speed bumps might create, such as, you know, interfering with response times, emergency vehicles, wear and tear on vehicles, more noise, those sorts of things. So those would be looked at as well. If it does meet the screening criteria, as stated in the policy, a petition would be created by staff that would identify the affected area of the installation of the speed bumps. That would be given to the petitioner, and they would need to go and garner eighty-five percent support from everybody in that, in that affected area. So we know that when we put a speed bump on a street, we've got eighty-five percent of the people on that street that are in support of the speed bump. And if they are able to garner that support, then the speed bumps could be installed by the city based on available funding.
Eighty-five percent, how far out are you going for that eighty-five percent?
Yeah, it would essentially be, you know, I mean, we're talking about residential areas, so it'd essentially be like a block, you know. You know, that way, and we'll indicate on the map, like, this is where the speed bumps would be, so the people that are signing the petition know that, hey, the speed bumps are gonna be in front of my house, not down the street. So it'd be just really disclosing what the proposal is. And again, if they get to that eighty-five percent, then we would schedule the installation of those facilities. And again, this is if the council chooses to adopt this policy. Our policy in the past has just been to kind of evaluate them, you know, at a staff level. Generally, we do recommend, in general, not installing them just because of all those other issues they create. And there may be another way to solve a speeding problem than putting in a speed bump. In terms of the stop signs, similar requests will be made by a citizen group, and again, it would be submitted to the traffic safety committee for initial screening. Some of the criteria that we would use to kind of initially screen it is looking at the facility, making sure that it's not, you know, on the distant edge of town and gets four cars per day. I mean, there's just kind of by inspection, we can kind of make a determination that, hey, it's not, it's not really a good application for installation of additional stop signs. But if, but if it meets that initial criteria, then a formal warrant study in conformance with the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So that's kind of the Bible for evaluating stop sign installations at intersections. And some of the criteria that that we would look at in that warrant study would be like vehicle volumes, pedestrian volumes, accidents, those sorts of things that would lead us to determine whether it's an appropriate installation for stop signs. So if it meets those criteria, and the warrants kind of push you in the direction of, hey, these stop signs will actually improve operations and improve safety, then it's a good, a good thing to install them. If the warrants aren't met, generally, installation of stop signs are just gonna create additional problems to the one that was initially brought up. So that's why we go through the warrant study. But if it does meet the warrants as outlined in the California AMUTCD, then those stop signs would be installed as funding is available to do so. So that's generally a summary of both of the policies, and tonight, we're asking you to either adopt the policies as they've been presented, or maybe adopt one or both policies with minor adjustments, or if you've got lots of thoughts, we could go back and rework them and bring them back at another council meeting, so.
Thank you, Dave. Council discussion on this agenda item?
I have one quick question. Mr. Peters, when it states a request is made by a citizen slash group, would that include anybody within the Kingsburg zip code? For example, we have a lot of people on the outskirts of town that also come and frequent town, and I know that some of those individuals have stated to me, hey, maybe we should consider putting a stop sign, for example, on Draper and Simpson, which has been contemplated before, from what I understand. So is it just residents within city limits, or is it residents within sphere of influence, or anybody in the Kingsburg zip code?
I mean, I think it could be anybody in the Kingsburg zip code. I mean, generally, you know, I mean, staff is also monitoring the intersections as well, and sometimes we might, we might be the ones who bring it up first, that, hey, there's issues that we're seeing accidents, or maybe our police department will contact Public Works and we'll have a discussion of, hey, why do we have so many accidents? For instance, the Bethel and Sierra intersection was an issue for a very long time, as was Academy or Tenth and Cam. And, you know, staff was aware of those problems and initially went through this process of doing the warrant studies, and ultimately, Cam and Tenth became a four-way stop, and, you know, the other one became a roundabout. So, but I think it's, you know, if someone outside can identify a problem and we agree, then, you know, I think it's a good thing to follow through and do that.
Thank you.
Is this on the traffic safety committee?
Myself, Daniel Galvez from Public Works, Sean Stevens from Police Department. That's generally the three that routinely meet quarterly to...
Nobody from fire?
Uh, I don't think fire was represented in our last meeting, but potentially, maybe there's a rep from fire. Are you the rep? So Chief Perkins is our rep for fire, yeah.
Okay.
Would you get input from, would you come this directly?
Um, no, I have not gotten direct comments from either of the two chiefs on this, no. We did discuss the policies at the traffic safety committee, and Mr. Stevens was there to represent the police department.
Is there any kind of studies on, like, with these speed humps in the neighborhood? Any kind of studies on how that impacts the home values or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Do most of the cities around us have them?
Yeah, they're, I'll say they're cautiously implemented. So, I mean, they, you know, most cities that do have a policy similar to this, and they are rigorously evaluated, and most of the cities that we were able to look at that had similar policies also had the requirement for getting support from the neighborhood. So they are done, but they're not just, hey, let's go out and put one in. And these are, I'll say, these are not, these are not, these not be the speed bumps, these would be the speed humps. So they're like a more gentle undulation. They're not the abrupt ones that you would see, like, in a shopping center.
Any comments from the public on this? Any comments from the public on this agenda item? Questions? No, okay, back to council? Questions, comments?
Uh, I have a few thoughts on it. Um, I'm, I'm opposed to the speed humps, to be just quite frank about it.
Hmm.
Um, Chief Perkins, from the back, can you tell me, your fire trucks, is this gonna improve response time or make it slower?
Much slower.
Yep.
Chief Dadian, can you speak to that?
Lower.
That's, that's, that's my safety concern.
Yeah.
Speed humps in general, um, those that are not gonna slow down are just gonna travel to the right of the speed hump, where you're more likely to have kids, you're more likely to have people in the sidewalks, you're more likely to hit parked cars.
Hmm.
Um, they're expensive, and if we had an issue with the police not responding to traffic complaints, I would be more supportive of it, but I gotta tell you, in my time up here, uh, every single time we've had any kind of traffic-related complaint that's gone to Chief, he's immediately addressed it, so I look at this as an unnecessary slowing down of our public safety and an unnecessary expense. I, I appreciate staff putting the time into this for the speed humps, but I'm, I'm opposed to them, I, I don't think they make fiscal sense, I don't think they make safety sense. I think that it seems like a good idea to people to put a speed bump to slow down for kids. I, I live on probably one of the most kid-active streets in town, and I'll tell you, it, it's not gonna slow people down the way that we think. And, you know, from my other employment, I can tell you, speed humps absolutely do slow down first responders.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't like it, so.
Yeah, that was one of the negative things that we had with the center policy, yeah.
So, that's just the opinion of one, but...
Yeah, some comments too, and also, if you put speed humps, you have to put signage, right?
Uh, yeah.
In the neighborhoods that they're coming up, and then how many, so say, uh, city does have speed humps, or we would some, someday approve this, is it one speed hump, I mean, what's the policy on, you know, one and then ten feet more later, or five, you know?
Yeah, usually they're, they're in a pair, they're separated by about three feet.
Three, okay.
Pair of, uh, of, uh, yeah, speed humps, soft undulations separated by about three feet, yeah, they are signed, so, yeah, installation's about seventy-five hundred bucks.
And the, I think I read where they're like, they're more than twelve feet wide, the, the humps?
Yeah, they're, well, yeah, ten-ish, yeah. It's close, yeah, they're, they're, they're softer, so you're not, you're not getting that hard.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to them too here in Kingsburg, to be honest.
They're made for parking lots.
Yeah.
What prompted this? Was it, um, a group of citizens that came and asked for this, or is it...
Yeah, I think staff just wanted to explore this, um, you know, what would a policy look like, and then have the discussion with council, because we do get requests from time to time, um, they have typically been, um, you know, evaluated by the Traffic Safety Committee, and I, I would say, you know, upwards, I can think of maybe one or two times that they've been installed, like, they were installed in the alleys by the, by the high school, but, um, ninety-seven plus percent of the time, they get denied. So, the thought was, you know, trying to come up with either a, a policy where the public can see how we're making the determination, um, and there's a mechanism for, for garnering that, that neighborhood's support, um, or have the discussion with council and just decide that, hey, speed bumps are not something that we are really interested in, and then that helps as well to respond to those requests, so.
I can speak to that a little bit too, sorry, uh, yeah, it's, it's really because, uh, we don't have, if someone makes a request, it's, it's generally just been no, and I think that there's sometimes frustration from the public that that's, they don't understand, like, how that decision's being made, or there hasn't been a policy decision made by council, so it just feels like, you know, they're not being heard, and so, you know, we discussed, okay, we probably need to have this conversation with, with council at a certain point, and then, so do we have the conversation without, without a proposed policy, but so at least at this way, you can kinda see what a potential policy would look like, um, and then there's a specific process then, both for stop signs and for speed humps, that, you know, the, the public knows how we evaluate them. So, that's, that's where this is coming from.
I don't think that this is gonna close the door for public coming in, 'cause I don't wanna shut the public out from hearing their concerns, but I think the, the mechanism will be, they can come to council, and they can explain why they think they need it. I don't wanna keep wasting a bunch of staff time with staff having to deal with people coming in, and then staff explaining to them. I would almost like it to be an automatic, like, you know, if, if this is the direction of council, council has said no to speed humps, but you're welcome to go at the public comment.
Exactly.
I just worry that this is gonna cause more, more staff time, if we have this criteria, and they have to evaluate the criteria, it just seems like it won't work also.
I understand the reasoning why, you know.
Yeah.
You guys would...
Yeah, I thi- I think, I think, you know, part of the benefit of this would be that staff would be screening out these requests, not council. You know, I mean, you guys have a lot on your plate too, um, you know, there, I mean, that, there's that, that benefit to it, I mean, a lot, the majority of the, of the, you know, based on this policy, the majority of the requests are, you know, may ne- may never, may never reach the council. You know, we can show them the policy, why it's not moving forward, for instance, you know, they're asking for speed bumps on Marion Street, we could just say, well, it's, it's not a residential street, there's a policy, done, you guys don't even have to talk about it. Um, but, you know, certainly making a policy decision that I'm not gonna do any, that's even easier, so, you know? And again, so this, 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 this would li- literally, I mean, this would limit the speed, speed humps to residential streets only, only in a situation where you have eighty-five percent, you know, we can, we can increase that percentage if, if you'd like, but, um, you know, a high percentage of people on that street want it, they're gonna be the ones mostly affected by that. But again, if, if we don't wanna do them at all, like I said, we've, we've, like Alex says, we've almost every time denied it, because the volumes are extremely low, um, you know, or there's a better way to deal with the speeding, or we put the radar trailer out there for a week, and it solves the problem for a year, so, I mean, there's other ways to attack it that have seemed to be more effective.
We're looking at this, um, because of pedestrians or, or kids, um, like, my immediate thoughts on that are the pedestrians that I've heard of in the last couple of years that have been hit by a vehicle are on streets that were not residential, and I could be wrong, but I think it's like in front of schools, or, like Eighteenth, or by the high school, um, I think over by Rafer Johnson, um, so there's, there's streets that this policy wouldn't help anyway?
Correct, yeah, this, I mean, that, it would screen out everything but a residential street, right, right out of the gate.
But it could slow down response to life-threatening situations, so I think...
You, you know, a lot, I mean, the, the, the general story is, you know, people feel like they're speeding on their streets, they put the speed bumps in, and then two weeks goes by, and those same residents are in there talking about having to listen to engines rev as they slow down and then speed back up, li- listening to cars scrape on, you know, on the, on the speed bump, so there's other problems that come with them. Um, so, I mean, unless we have like a residential street where people, you know, where it's twelve hundred feet long, and people are going fifty-five miles an hour or something down, I mean, and we just generally don't see that, we see, you know, speeds maybe, you know, thirty-five and a twenty-five, and the volumes aren't that high, and the speeding doesn't occur that often, and so, like I said, there's been other ways to, to address it than putting them in speed bumps or speed humps.
Let's have a comment.
Sure.
So, I'm probably maybe a little bit on the opposite side of this one, because, you know, I've learned in, on Lindquist in particular, where Athwell Park is, and also, there is a school, um, that it almost dead ends and, or elbows off of. I, I've met several residents that say speeding is a problem on Lindquist, and have told me directly, and it wasn't just one individual, it was multiple individuals, as I was, you know, meeting the residents on Lindquist specifically. And so, I think to have a policy is not a bad thing, I think it's a good thing where people, you know, residents could go, hey, listen, this is the policy, if I can get fellow residents to go along with it, and maybe they don't, um, but I like the fact that there's an outlet, instead of like Alex says, you know, when, when people come, they just say no, and there is almost not a reason as to the no, so, although I can agree with some of Brandon, Brandon's assertions, I think that having something is better than having nothing, and so, um, especially in that particular instance of Lindquist specifically in District One, um, it was brought to my attention, and I think that some, some type of policy, um, would be good for the residents to at least explore whether we can do it or not.
Yeah, and I, you know, I mean, ultimately, I guess the council has control of this, because it says they'll be installed as, as funding is available, to determine the funding, but we could have put something in there too, that, you know, the installation needs to be, uh, ratified by council or something, so that if we do get to a point where, okay, hey, this kinda makes sense, and we've got eighty-five percent of everybody on the street agreeing, that it could come back to council, so it can be, you know, evaluated to determine whether to move forward or not, but, I mean, that...
It's like the eighty-five percent, and I hear what you're saying, uh, Councilmember Silva, about Lindquist, and I understand that, and we, I think we all have people that'll call and complain about the speed, and the speed is definitively an issue, like, that does happen, this is not to say that people aren't speeding.
Right.
It's just saying that this is not the answer for that. I, I feel like the answer is enforcement, the answer is, you know, lighting when we can, when we have pedestrian issues, crosswalks are more of an issue.
Well, there's been, there's been some, you know, traffic calming things that we've been able to do in the past too, that weren't speed humps, like, for instance, we fifteen years ago had a big problem with speeding on Tulare Street, and we were able to, when we put those, uh, bike lanes in, the speeds went way down, just because you're confining the roadway width, people don't feel like they've got this big wide road to speed down. So, there's things that we can do there, I mean, curb extensions too, to kinda pinch them down, they'll, they'll slow down as they go through that narrowed area. Um, that, so there's ways to deal with the speeding that aren't necessarily humps, that we've been actually pretty successful in implementing in the past.
I like, I like the eighty-five percent, my concern with that is, even if you have a hundred percent, that doesn't change the fact that it's gonna slow down response times.
Right.
And a- at the end of the day, I understand that from a community standpoint, this may be beneficial. Um, it may seem a little bit better to have cars slowing down sooner, but I just think we can't slow down our emergency response vehicles in any capacity. I mean, I think we've had Chief Perkins come in here every time and tell us how much each one of these seconds matter.
Yeah.
And so, to have that time and time again, these giant fire trucks, ambulances are very heavy, heavy things, but when they get going, they're hard to stop, and once they're stopped, it's hard to get going. I just, for me, I'm just not comfortable slowing down our emergency vehicles for that, when we have other, other outlets for it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this, uh?
I have a question on the stop sign, how is that different than what we have already? I thought that's what we do all...
Yeah, I think this is just kinda spelling out the process for the public, I mean, this is kinda what we were sort of informally working through, but there's, yeah, there's a, you know, there's an opportunity for them to come and make a formal application, and then they can kinda see what the process is, um, so just kinda formalizing what we're already...
I do like that part.
Yeah.
Can we hear from the department head about this? Can I hear from Public Works about this? Your thoughts on the speed humps and stop signs? These are kind of our experts in this, I'd just like to know your, your opinion.
Yeah, definitely, so, um, as we've kinda discussed, uh, in the Traffic Safety Committee, um, and as when we get the requests from, from residents, uh, most of the streets where they want them, um, wouldn't qualify, um, you know, we get them, like, hey, want them on Sierra, we want them on Rafer Johnson, um, talked about Lindquist, talked about, uh, Morgan, um, but like I said, having some of those, having that process for us, I, I think would definitely help to say, hey, this is the process. The, the, the majority of the work is done by the resident that's requesting them, um, and I think it kind of gets them involved in the process, um, and they can kind of see, hey, my neighbors actually don't want speed bumps, and usually, they wanna figure out, and I think most neighborhoods can also identify where the speeding cars are at and where they're going. Um, and I said, we, we've had those conversations with the residents of, like, hey, there's a certain car that's speeding, and give Freddie a call, or PDE, and say, hey, this is what, the complaints that we're receiving. Um, but I think having a, a, a policy would, would be beneficial on our end, because we could either refer them to the website, meet with them, give them a policy, and say, hey, this is the process that you need to follow to, to either get a stop sign or a speed hump.
Thank you, thank you, Daniel.
Good evening, council, uh, so, I'm not in favor of them, but, that said, I, I also think that that we can't cover every situation, we can't imagine every situation, so I'd, I'd like to leave some sort of avenue to install them, um, but I don't know that we necessarily need a policy, I think that might be a, you know, a specific effort that we could address for whatever specific problem that we have. So, we've done other things in the past, um, with that Dave mentioned, you know, we, we put the speed trailer out there that slows people down, uh, we, you know, have concentrated enforcement that will slow people down. Uh, you know, just sometimes a physical presence will do the same thing. Also, you know, I've, I've given out cones, I gave cones and delineators to, I can't even remember who, about seven years ago, somebody in the neighborhood, and I had some cones that we weren't using, but here, take these cones, and they were perfectly happy with that. I've also seen those things that you can buy, um, uh, you know, they're available for the public to buy, you know, they have the little kid, the little image of the kid, and the flag, and stuff like that, that slows me down. So, I think we can do some of those things that we necessarily don't need a policy for, but, again, I, I don't wanna take the speed humps completely off the table, I would like to reserve maybe an avenue if that is somehow our last resort, but I, I don't know that it's necessary for just a common, average complaint.
Thank you, chief.
Chief Perkins?
Chief Perkins.
Hide in the back?
I was trying to hide. I know you guys don't wanna hear, or guys and gals both don't wanna hear us yammer on any more than we have to. I, I, I concur with a number of different things, I think from a public safety perspective, it does slow our response times, and just as Councilmember Purcell pointed out, our rigs are unusually heavy, they're already, uh, commercial-weighted trucks, our ambulances aren't the nimble little vehicles that you find in large metropolitan cities, so they are heavier than normal. So, that does also increase maintenance costs when we have to brake more often, hard start more often, all those things are very tremendously difficult for a vehicle. Having said that, and again, slowing down response times is always part of that, and just as you alluded to, seconds matter when it comes to brain cells and for fire, we, we don't need to decrease any of those response times. Having said that though, I think, uh, as a prudent person, speaking on, on behalf of multiple different entities, and just seeing this from the outside perspective too, I think people need a, a, a vehicle to voice their opinion about it. A policy, uh, may be a little bit overboard with it, but I think having some direction as to what we might do, and having a, a means for people to have those questions answered. If, if I were one of the constituents in District One, and Lindquist was a huge issue, and we were having that, I think just as Chief Dadian alluded, maybe there's a different answer for children-at-play signs, something that could be given out in, at that, at that moment, and have it be a municipal ordinance, rather than putting in something that's hard, de- you know, has multitude of different drawbacks. So, any of those signs, any kind of a cone, and it's far cheaper, far cheaper, and we can run over a cone, and it, it's not really gonna hurt the apparatus for the most part, maybe some, some tears on the cone side, but other than that, that's all I have to offer.
Thank you, chief. More discussion questions?
I think if we were to move forward with policy, um, the only way I think that I would like be supportive of it is if part of the application or the process involved both of our chiefs, like, looking at the area, and like, signing off on it, um, as, um, I don't know, an area that wouldn't slow down response times, making sure that we're keeping the public, um, safe. I think that that would be the only way right now that I think that I could see it being good.
As part of the policy?
As part of the policy, that both chiefs would have to...
Yeah, sign up.
And I agree with, um, Laura, but I'd wanna take it one step further, I'd want at least one of the captains and one of the sergeants to sign off on it as well. Just, just because they... Just, just because they are the ones, I mean, out there, I just want a really good, clear review and a lot of opportunity for them to weigh in.
There, there. Hi. There, there is a, a provision in the policy, maybe we could reword it a little bit, but it does, it does talk about, um, uh, the, the, if the streets are, are an emergency response route, um, making a determination that the speed humps will not significantly increase the response times. So that's where we would, we would, um, you know, consult with PD and Fire. And if they, you know, if they made the determination, that's, that's item C on page four, but if they made the determination that, hey, that's gonna adversely affect response times, then, then it would kick out the request at that point. That's part of the initial screening. So it's kind of there, but maybe, you know, maybe we can reword it, make it a little stronger if, if you, if you felt like you wanted to do that.
Can you educate me on what would not be considered?
I was just thinking this.
It's, you know, it's really, honestly, it's kind of, it's kind of up to them, you know, it's kind of up to them. You know, I'm sure, I'm sure it would also include, you know, how long is the street, where is the speed hump proposed to be located? And, you know, I think they're, they would have to look at it on a case by case basis, so that, that's where that would be routed to those departments for, for their assessment. And you know, if they were, if they made the, the determination that, hey, it's a pretty short street or, you know, um, the, the proposed location of the speed humps won't adversely affect our times, then we can move forward. But if they made the determination that it would, or, yeah, then, then we would just, we would use that as one basis to, to deny the request. Yeah.
I think we could make this even more simple. If we're going to go forward with a policy, I think that if it has approval from Fire Chief, from the Police Chief, and from our Director of Public Works, uh, that's something that I would even look at. But prior to having all three of those,
Yeah.
it is an automatic no. And I would, because that's who we're going to hold accountable for the mistakes.
Yeah.
Um, and those are the ones that are going to be dealing with it every day. Those are the ones that are going to be doing the work. And I think that for me, if we're going to have a policy, it's those three signatures with a recommendation of approval. And anything short of that, I would never support.
Yeah. And I, I think that's kind of the way it would be set up because this, the, the initial screening would be done done by the Traffic Safety Committee, which includes all those people that you just named. So if, if the committee reviewed the request and said, not, not a good spot for speed bumps, that it dies right there. If they were all in concurrence that, hey, this is probably a good application, then we go to determining the the affected area and, uh, and circulating the petition. But the, the other thing I wanted to mention too is when you put speed, speed humps on one street, it has a potential to increase traffic on the two adjacent streets, so. So depending on, you know, where it's located, we may expand that, expand that area to include those adjacent streets who might, who might be getting that additional traffic, so.
I would just like to be very, I would just like to be very discretionary for our department heads. Just pretty clearly spell that criteria for them to say yes or no. And I, if some, even if someone does meet this criteria and they're opposed to it, I don't want it to negatively impact them. So I really just want it to be their discretion. I, I don't know how we would modify this, but I think that a clear discretion of
What, what if we?
Director, if that, their discretion is, it's a yes or it's a no. They have a signature or they don't have a signature.
What if we added something in there that, uh, you know, the, uh, the, then, the initial screening must, must receive unanimous support from the Traffic Safety Committee. That way, if there's one person on that committee saying, bad idea, it dies.
I would want their names because it, they could.
Yeah, we, yeah.
At that meeting, I would want it to be.
Yeah, we could spell that out. Yeah.
Additionally, like just thinking if it was in my neighborhood, that eighty-five percent, like it, I think that the person, the residents that it's directly in front of their house have to say yes.
Hmm.
You know, because I think all the surrounding ones could, but if it was in front of my house and I'm the one that says no, I would think that.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the petition serves two purpose, purposes. One to, you know, to determine that the vast majority of the people want this. And also, I think it alerts the people that may not want it, that it's happening or it's proposed, and then they have the opportunity to come in and, um, you know, express their concerns, so.
There were those three signatures.
Yeah.
I would, I would be okay with it. I went from a no to a, I think so.
Is the eighty percent a hard eighty percent, or can that be ninety percent?
Eighty-five.
Uh, it can, yeah, we've already increased, mo- most, uh, well, I'll say a lot of cities have a sim- similar policy.
Okay.
That's around the two-thirds.
Okay.
And we've already made the determination at a staff level that, that probably needs to be much higher than that, which is where we kind of got to the eighty-five. But if you want to change it to ninety or a hundred, that's definitely why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighty-five is pretty high.
It's high, yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, I don't think people here in Kingsburg, it'd be hard to get eighty-five, I think. That's just my opinion.
Maybe, yeah.
Unless it's a real short block. Now, you did say that we could also put language in there, that it could come back to council, even if it's approved by the department head?
I, I think you, I think you could that, you know, that once, one, if they bring, you know, if it, if it meets the initial screening, both chiefs, Public Works, they're all on board with it. We, you know, prepare the petition, they take it, they get their eighty-five percent uh, signatures. Yeah, we could add it, that the, that the final approval step would be at council. We can add that in there.
I think I'd like that because if one ever does get approved, I would like to have the citizens come in and.
Sure, yeah. And like I said, we'd give, give those, uh, those people that maybe weren't willing to sign the petition an, an opportunity to come in and voice their, their concerns.
Yeah.
And then ultimately, we're going to have to authorize the payment anyway.
Exactly, yeah, so.
Whether we allocate monies for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
Well, it says in there, they could pay for it too.
Yeah, or they could.
Yeah, we had it, we had a provision in there, but we could take that out. We could take that out.
I don't like any private funding for this.
Gotcha.
Take that out. Okay, so.
Do we need, need this to come back with the revisions?
Do you need to come back with the new revisions, Alex? On, on the speed humps?
I think given the discussion and the number of changes, I think we'd like to make sure that we encompass all of them and bring them back so that you have one more review. At least on the, it sounds like everyone's okay with the uh, stop sign. So if that's the case, you could, uh, make action on that, and then uh, we can, uh, take your direction and, and bring it back at a future date.
Okay.
Chiefs, do you guys have any issues with the stop signs policy, or anything you'd like to say about the stop signs portion?
Okay, the, oh. Oh, yeah. Any, um, public comment on this agenda item? Speed humps and stop signs? No, okay. Seeing none, um. Can I get a motion just for this stop sign, the new stop sign policy, uh, to approve? Let me see what's exactly what it's called. The, uh, traffic, uh, installation of, stop sign installation requests. Yeah, is what it's exactly what it's called. Can I get a motion?
So, yeah, oh, sorry. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then it'll come back to us for the, uh, speed hump request. Right. Uh, next we have, well, thank you, Dave. Thank you chiefs on helping out on this, uh, item. Seven point one, Community Service Commission, um, we met, was it Monday or last week? It was last week, um, Adam gave an update on the Dog Park to the committee. Uh, the committee discussed Heritage Park, Downtown Park and Memorial Park about the, uh, the new turf that could be going in, that, that would see as wanting to put in. And Adam brought up, there's going to be a senior resource fair on Friday at the Senior Center. Uh, it's open to all seniors, I believe, Adam, from anywhere, right?
Correct, for all Fresno County.
All Fresno, all Fresno County, okay. Any senior in Fresno County, uh, so there's, it's going to have several things there for the, for the seniors, um, and it's from nine to two, right, Adam? Yes. And that's my update on that. Seven point two, Public Safety, we meet next week. Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
We meet next week.
Next week? Thank you. Seven point four, Economic Development.
Have not met.
Not met. Seven point five, Finance Committee.
Uh, we did meet, I think, on the twenty-fourth. Uh, we went over Athwell Park Bathroom, uh, construction bid. Uh, there's some overages there that I think is going to work its way back. Credit card policy, we went through that for the city, and, uh, the general plan, uh, RFP review. Um, there's still work to do on the two major ones. Athwell, Athwell's over by quite a bit on the projections. And Finance is trying to work through that before it comes back to council. The RFPs are out. I think there's a little bit more follow-up work to do on the RFPs that they're working on before that comes back to us for the general plan.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you. Seven point six, Planning Commission, uh, there's a joint workshop on the housing element on May eleventh. Uh, it's at six, right? Six PM?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven point seven, South Kings GSA.
Uh, we meet, uh, a week from today.
Thank you. Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
We met yesterday morning, and the biggest part of the discussion was the June second summer kickoff event that they are working on with the chamber. And they're calling it summer kickoff, so you should see some advertising for that soon.
Thank you. Seven point nine, Council of Governments.
We met last Thursday. Uh, it was a pretty light agenda for both, uh, Council of Governments and for Rural Transit. So noth- nothing to report.
Thank you. Seven ten, Quarterly Council Update of All Inter- Intergovernmental Committees and Boards. Does anybody have anything from, uh, any of those? Not tonight?
We meet, um, the five cities we meet, meet, I think it's on Monday.
I think we went through this the last council, didn't we?
Okay, thank you. Seven eleven, Councilmember Reports?
I have two.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I attended the Chamber Mixer yesterday. That was at Print Theory. I don't know if any of you have gotten an opportunity to go to Print Theory or see what they're all about, but, um, it was a very nice event, um, well-attended. Um, they gave a tour of the facility, um, the silk screening and, and, um, the business that they've done over, you know, a short period of time is pretty incredible, and it's right there in the business part. Um, so that was really good, the Chamber Mixer. And then, on a feel-good story, I don't know how many of you, um, know Andrew Voorhees and the Voorhees family, but the Voorhees family is, lives in District One. And Andrew Voorhees, actually is a KHS alumni, as some of you may know, was a very, I'd say very good, maybe really good athlete, right? I mean, he, uh, was very good at, at football. He landed a scholarship to go to USC. Um, graduated from USC with several degrees, um, played football for them all, I believe, five to six years, right? Because there was COVID years.
Went in December of his senior year.
Yeah. And so he was invited to the NFL Combine. So, um, he went to the NFL Combine where he unfortunately suffered a knee injury. And battled through that knee injury, still benching two hundred and twenty-five pounds. I think he did it like twenty-eight or thirty-eight times, something, some amazing number. And so, um, his perseverance and the gentleman that he is from the family that he came from, uh, persevered and landed an NFL, um, contract with the Baltimore Ravens. And so he has just had knee surgery three weeks ago. Um, is recovering, is doing well. And I thought it was worth mentioning because, um, it's not very often, I, I don't think that, uh, citizen, a past resident of the town goes and plays for the NFL and goes through that type of, um, trial and tribulation that he's went through. So, um, I just wanted recognition to the Voorhees family and to Andrew for a job well done in representing Kingsburg and the community here. That's all I had.
Think you'd like, I'd like to add something to that. I think the reason why he was such a great football player also is because he wrestled at the time he was six. The time he was six until the time he was a freshman. Because I coached him a couple of those years, about four. Yeah, sometimes.
I really think it was his junior high principal.
Right. Anyway, yeah, congratulations to Andrew. Thank you, Dave.
A lot of good stuff.
Yep, um. Seven twelve, City Managers Report.
I, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. Anybody else have anything on, on, uh, council reports? I'm sorry.
I got asked to speak at the Tuesday Club yesterday, and they wanted, um, like, updates on the city and a few other things, and so I got to share all the great things going on. And some of the members expressed to me that if we have another round of our mini murals, that they would like to be contacted to be a part of it.
Nice. Anybody else? Council reports? I have none. Okay, thank you. Okay, now seven twelve, City Managers Report.
So a quick update on the fiber project. Uh, Phase Two is going to begin shortly after, uh, Swedish Festival. Uh, so that'll be underway, and they are talking about right now doing Phase Two and Phase Three potentially at the same time. Uh, so, because they're in obviously different parts of town, so they are, um, uh, just working some of those details out. And I was contacted by the Business Journal, and they're going to do a story on the fiber project, so, uh, I will let you know, uh, when we hear about that. And then, uh, a couple of weeks from tonight, um, we're, uh, going to bring, uh, an item, a, a good item back to the council, um. A few of you are here, uh, I think on the council, um, when we brought in the community, uh, planning team, and they did an evaluation of our downtown, and they identified, um, what's now Stone Plaza as one of our catalyst sites, and so we were uh, actually, uh, given a, a planning, uh, award uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, for seeing that through and, uh, obviously seeing the, the progresses occurring there, so. Um, uh, we'll, we'll bring that to you, uh, uh, next, uh, at our next meeting, and plan to have the property owner there as well, who uh, will give you an update on, uh, on the project and, uh, hopefully on his tenants as well. So, that's all I have.
Good, thank you, Alex. Number eight, Future Den Items, we have none. Okay, so. Number nine, would like to adjourn tonight City Council meeting. Thank you. Listen, a little over, a little over now with all the discussions.